Good evening and welcome to the July 19th Town Board Work Session. Will the clerk please call this, I'd like to call this meeting as ordered. Can we do, please call the roll?
Draw.
Here.
Cole.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Ackenden.
Here.
All here.
Okay, thank you. You have before you the board, you have the approval of minutes of June 21st.
So moved.
Can I make a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Moved by Cole, second by Lee. Roll call vote, please.
Draw.
Aye.
Cole.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Ackenden.
Aye.
All aye.
Monthly reports are in. There's a couple that we're still waiting for. Thank you. It was early with them. Next on the agenda is our guests, and I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Ivors. Oh, no, I think I will turn this, Ms. Ivors first on the agenda here is the Community Victory Garden update. I should say, I will turn this over to Sabrina Renner to give us a little update here on our community victory garden. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm really here for moral support. Larry is going to do the talking.
Perfect. Thank you so much, sir. Welcome.
I'm the new committee chair for this year.
You are.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
This is my first year as committee chair.
Welcome.
So, I just have a few things, and I'll just open it up, you know, if there's any questions. So the Penfield Community Garden, you know, if anybody's unfamiliar, operates on Penfield property.
Can you just speak a little closer, or move that microphone a little? Thank you, so we can hear you.
How's that better?
Yes.
And it gives residents a place to grow their own flowers and herbs, and an organic environment for their own consumption or for family. And we also donate extras to the Penfield Accu Medical Food Shelf. There are 85 whole beds, and because of demand, we've split a few in half so that we can accommodate more. There's usually a waiting list to get in, so there's 12 half-sized beds for people who want less of a, you know, responsibility, I suppose. And I guess, we've had a few issues with our infrastructure as far as the water supply. With the new expansion we had for the community children's garden, we need to extend the water, you know, back there to make that easier. And we had a little issue last year with the hookup to the fire hydrant got stolen towards the end of the year. So we were on the hook for that one a little bit, but we're trying to restrain it with some chains, but if somebody wants to steal it, they're just going to go up and unscrew it and walk away with it.
Really need a better solution.
Is there, I was going to say, maybe we should discuss that sometime, a bit off the line?
It's expensive, those water meters.
Yep.
Yeah, that was, that was a big hit.
Maybe it's something we should.
So, again, the community garden supports our community by sharing knowledge. We usually conduct seed starting classes, new gardener orienteering, or orientation, and some other things throughout the year. We supported and also did a plant sale that benefited both us and some other local organizations. We did the Fourth of July Parade this year, like we usually do every year. We're planning another pumpkin walk in the fall, which was very successful and popular last year, so we're going to keep doing that. Like I said, we have partnered with other local gardening groups and Rotary where we can to benefit everyone. And of course, our extra produce goes to the Accu Medical Food Shelf. The garden provides almost a yearly opportunity for Eagle Scout projects for Boy Scouts that helps the garden improve while also promoting ethical leadership and development for our youth with what usually ends up being, since we can provide the financing, organize and do opportunity for the scout to, you know, learn leadership with, so very positive there. Our latest one this year was with the scout, along with our grant money, did the children's garden, which was on the news and.
Yes.
Of course, on our town website and whatnot. So the children's gardens help teaching kids where food comes from, healthy eating, and caring for the environment. Improvement projects that we typically go through in a year, which, you know, takes up our time and money, is replacing, you know, weathered wood for stuff that's getting old, like the raised beds, or sheds, or whatever. In process of trying to improve the signage for use of the composting areas, and, you know, use and maintenance of rain barrels and rain collection that we use at the garden. One of our projects, maybe not related to anything, but we grow peppers and send them into the Small Axe Pepper Project, and in return, they can send us hot sauce for our members to use, or money, if we need money for projects that we're doing. It's a very positive program. Everybody loves participating. And then, you know, as a general rule, everything is environmentally responsible as possible. We operate as an organic garden. We're trying to use some non- or non-chemical weed control for our fence lines and stuff because it's all deer fence to keep the animals from sharing in our, in our work. We've switched completely now, or almost completely, the rototiller isn't, but weed whacking, trimming, blowing, and lawn mowing now is all electric.
Great.
We have solar panels on our storage shed that provide the power for all the batteries for the electric, and that's been working, you know, wonderful. And communications and sharing, we have a monthly newsletter that this past month, we sent out things for our members that talked about invasive species, poison ivy, and soil pH. So, is it, that's pretty much all I had, you know, put together. Are there any questions that you might have about the garden?
No, sounds good.
I was just over there the other day, and I thought, I love the new, the containers, the new ones you're doing, sitting in the children's garden. I think those are a great setup. Just wanted to see how well they were doing, but you're growing some, there's some vegetables in there coming in.
Yeah, there have been at least three classes in there now with kids, so they've been hard at work.
Our new Penfields are future farmers.
Yeah.
That's wonderful, so. We thank you, thank you very much for your work and continuing, and a nice service to all the, for the residents. I know there's a waiting list for the beds, so hopefully.
Eighty-five beds.
Is there?
Eighty-five full beds and 12 half beds, and they're full with the waiting list, so it's a popular place to be.
Very much so. I know other towns have used our example of our garden to start their own, so I think that's a good tribute to us.
We started having our committee meetings at the pavilion that a couple of years ago, our scout project was to put up a pavilion. We realized that the sun gets pretty bright under that at the end of the day, so we just added more drop-down shade stuff for it.
Great.
It's a nice place to have our little meeting.
I know, I see you guys out there a lot. Thanks, yeah. Thank you very much for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a nice, happy gardening. Thank you. Next on our agenda is, I'll turn this over to Ms. Ivors, as I think we have some guests here tonight.
Yes, we do. We'll give a moment for the changing of the guards.
Sure.
You'll recall that we've had Jordan and Max, who are the owners of 1788, 1790, and 1794 in before, and certainly, gentlemen, you can make your way up to the front if you'd like, in to discuss a potential idea they had for redevelopment of their property. They came to the town board. The town board provided some thoughts and feedback. The group went back to the drawing board, if you will, with a revised site sketch, and they came through and chatted with the project review committee. That's the staff committee that looks at proposed development. And so, we've seen the site sketch, and then since then, they've worked with their architect to develop some renderings to give the board an idea of the direction they're heading in before they make formal application. So this is not a formal application, this is just sort of an informal discussion and review. So I'll first bring up the site plan that's been recently submitted, and I'll pull that up and bring it onto screen so everyone can see it.
Perfect. Thank you.
So, you'll see, and just for orientation purposes, because anytime you're looking at an area, you have no idea where you are, over here on the right where the cursor is, that's Penfield Road. This building right here is, we're going to be remaining unchanged. This is the, sort of the former church-looking building. I'm not sure who the occupants are in the building, if, I'm so sorry to say that out loud.
Denture office is the main.
Thank you. Thank you. And then, this is the building that would be maintained or kept. This is the 1990, it was determined that it's a historic building. It dates back to the 1800s, or early 1900s, and there's certainly some history there that would, the town would really appreciate being able to retain and celebrate. And so, this is a newly proposed building, but, and it's bringing that building a little bit closer to the road. They've changed the orientation of this back building so that it retains, does a couple of things. It creates a little bit of a better flow between the adjacent properties next door. It creates centralized parking between the buildings. It also orients this back building so that it's providing a buffer to the neighboring street or properties that are on Liberty, and it provides more parking, but less potential impact with respect to headlights and cars turning around. So that's the updated site plan, and I'm going to also then just bring up the renderings, and then I'm going to stop talking. This is the part where, up to this point, where I can speak and know the past, and I'll bring up the next image, which is the proposed elevation. And I do apologize, they did try sending an updated version of this, and I only have this one available on the ready. I can certainly update the town board if this has been modified.
That is the updated one.
That is the updated one. Okay, wonderful. So at this point, I would have the applicant maybe introduce their guest and go from there.
So, Jordan Morrison and Max Eberts again.
Yes.
And then this is Dave Hanlon, our architect, who's sort of helping us through and coaching us through, you know, the project.
Sure.
So we've shared the feedback, and Linda, you are absolutely correct about the historic nature of the building. So we're not touching that building at all, or leaving it the way it is. But we've shared the feedback that you guys had, you guys shared, and the staff shared in both meetings we had with them. We shared it with Dave, and this is sort of our next iteration of where we'd like to go.
Okay, so. I think what I'd like to do is pull up the other, they do have another view, and this sort of gives you a sense of what Penfield Road would look like? Because on this, on this rendering, the lower one is the one that would front on Penfield Road.
Okay.
The other building comes down.
The other building on the top would be on the way, in the back.
In the back.
But you weren't clear on that picture before, that that one building that's sort of hidden by trees now.
Yes.
Is the one that comes down to the room for.
Correct. Yes, so let me.
And that's not historic.
That's not historic, no.
Yeah, I think we confirmed that was 60s, 70s, somewhere in there, maybe is the build time for that.
Yeah.
There you go, that's, that's better.
That's perfect, yeah. So this is the rendering that sort of, this is existing building, existing building, proposed building.
So we've added the decks, I don't, that was the initial version on the left, the proposed 12-foot building, but we've added decks and different features to, you know.
For the street, for the street side, or for the backside?
Correct, from the street side.
The street has that, yeah. That porch, I think.
Yeah, if you go back to the other rendering, yeah, it shows the porch.
Right, so as an architect, you were looking to make it more of a historical look, I see. That's, yeah.
And I don't know if it's helpful, I know you've got on the screen, if you're looking at here, I've got hard copies too.
It's fine looking here.
Actually, I would love a hard copy of that if, we don't have that in the drive, right?
We have, it was just added to the drive.
Oh, okay.
But it's always.
We'll take it, thank you.
They went to the trouble of printing, you might as well enjoy the benefit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, 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 we can share, we can share.
So, the, yeah, as Jordan mentioned, the larger rendering shows.
Oh, we're going to need a mic, so.
Oh, your microphone. Yeah. Sorry.
Wow, he's rushing to get to the other mic.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, so on that, on this view, you can see the two, two-and-a-half-story building that paces Penfield Road. That didn't catch the updated porch that we've added to the roadside that shows on the other view. So of course, we'd want it to make it look, you know, as a traditional quality that you would expect on Main Street or Penfield Road, you know, in the village, in the town. And it's meant to be, you know, fairly simple in design, but enough character to it that it feels like it fits in well. And in fact, we've kept it to a two-story facade on the Penfield roadside. It grows to three stories on the parking lot side. We actually reduced some units in that building to get it down to what you see there. So yeah, if you want to, why don't we just go to the large, yeah, large elevations? So, you know, that, the character, you can see there, trying to create something that's very traditional, late 1800s look. Excuse me, you know, shinkle, wood trim, some metal roof over the porch. Elements like that, that create, you know, a nice character to it. And then the building in the back, although it's three stories, you know, we've been successful at doing three-story buildings, but have it appear to be a two-and-a-half-story building. So the upper floor, the units are tucked into the eaves, so it has the character of a two-and-a-half-story, or, you know, two-story plus attic look to it. So that's the character that we're trying to, you know, provide for the site. And as you described on the site, you know, we've reflected all the comments that we've received to date, and be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Forward questions?
Well, so how many, how many, you just said it, and I missed it, but how many apartments for the back?
So if you go, yeah, on the site plan, you'll see, the front building has 12 units. There's five per floor, first, second, then two on the third. So, and then on the back building, there's 35 units.
And these are for like, not for families, or are they for families too?
They'd probably be a mix of one and two bedroom units, and that's typically, you know, couples, single people, some empty nesters. It's usually, you get a wide range, a wide mix in a site like this. You'd think there'd be empty nesters, and you end up with, you know, young professionals, but, and vice versa, so it's, it'll be a mix.
And there, there's no garages or overhangs? Everything is outside parking?
Yeah, just surface parking, no interior parking.
What's that dedicated parking though? Because people park back there to go to other places and so on, and there's that, there's that, what is down there right now? It's been many things. It was a landscaper, and then it was a salon.
There was a salon back there.
There's that outbuilding back there too. And they need parking, right?
I think each of those tenants has their own parking as well.
Yes.
Yeah, there's, that parking lot continues towards Liberty, Liberty Street.
So, this is, in your proposed parking, it's a total of 74 units?
Seventy-four parking spots.
Seventy-four parking, I'm sorry, parking spots, I meant, 74.
Is it slightly more than that?
No, 74 is within that demised area.
Yep.
But if you have two adults, they have two cars.
You know, usually, the ratio that's used on projects like this, that have a mix of the ones and two bedrooms that are being proposed, the ratio is typically 1.25. That's the national standard for apartments. That's been successful because there's, you know, diversity of use. Some people have one, some have two. It's just the number of people that are on-site at any given time.
And where's our road, our access road? Is that in between all at parking?
Right there.
It's that, right here, yeah.
But it goes down Liberty, from Liberty to Liberty?
It's very similar, that weighs out almost identically to the way it is right now.
So, right now, it'd just be taking a swath of the parking out, or something?
Well, right now, that's basically just grassy vacant land that isn't used for anything. Well, I think that, where the building is essentially, is vacant land, if you've got an area of it.
Right.
So we've added, what we've done here is, there are about six spots or eight spots in front of the back building that I moved out, just so we have some green area in front of the building. And then there's added parking where the number 21 is. That's an added section of parking, just so that we end up with the same number of parking before and after. And if need be, you know, we can tweak this to provide even a few more spots.
So the parking spots that are up close to the building are the handicap, probably, and mostly those for the residents?
Yep, you see the hatched spots.
Yep.
That hatching is a handicapped aisle.
Is that parking at the far top of the drawing, the rendering? Is that the parking lot that's next to like the little plaza with the barber shop and salon, and Hang Wai and all that? Is that?
No, that's not on that, that wasn't on that rendering at all.
Okay, because that's.
That has its own parking. They wouldn't, like, they don't use our area.
Okay.
Our area could be used by the tenants between us and the Liberties generally.
This is a good example of seeing.
Yeah, so you can see those four rows of parking are maintained on the new site plan. And what's been added is that extension of the parking up onto the right-hand side of the back area.
And then you'd be finishing that road all the way, the access road, all the way to the connection to.
Liberty to Liberty.
To Liberty.
That'd be great.
I mean, the idea really is connecting it, making it all, like, it fits together.
Mm-hmm. And as part of this plan, there'd be that, a formal connection and roadway from this, their parcel here to this parcel, and that's been a connection, that's been a long-desired improvement, I would say, by the town.
Yes.
And then you will be, you would be plowing it and so forth? That's all you guys, right?
On our property, yeah.
On your property, yep, through to the, yep. I just wanted to make clear.
But it's still an access road for the public, so.
They need, like, I think that our tenants, our users, will use that road to, you know, to leave or see businesses and head.
I think they'll come out, sure, they'll come out that back on Liberty because it's a lot easier.
I think there's like, there'll be three access points that they'll regularly use. And I was just over there too, and I used two different access points, my way in and my way out.
But if you're at the roofer, or if you're at the restaurant, you know, you might go down that access road to get out on the other end of Liberty to hit Five Mile Line versus getting, you know, making a left out.
Yeah, it's difficult making a left.
There will be people, other than your tenants, using it.
I would, yeah, I would expect that.
As you look at the drawing, and we're looking at the Magnet, right, the one-story restaurant now.
Yep.
As you look to the left of that, on this drawing, it's showing, that's new grass, I assume, right? New green space? Is that what that's depicting?
Yeah, we cleaned it up. That could be parking, but that's.
Okay, so that was giving me my next question was, is there, if need be, could that still retain some parking, maybe specific to the Magnet, or, you know, I'm not sure when their peak hours are, and just want to be sure.
Yeah, we have no problem reducing the green space. We just think it makes it more of a park-like.
Yep.
Like, community feel that makes it, like, people want to be there and walk around.
We agree. We're all for the green, the greenness, but just want to make sure that everybody's got enough parking when push comes to shove. That's the only thing. And how about the buffer then, to the rear of the new building in the back? How much of that buffer is being disturbed by?
Well, I think just about zero of it. It's pretty wild how significant that buffer is. The neighboring parcel behind us is like overgrown and sort of like, a little bit out of control, perhaps, but like, there's tons of trees, really tall, like, trees that are way bigger than the building we're proposing. You really can't see anything through it today. It has a fence already, like a stockade wood fence, it's already there. I can't imagine that'd be interrupted at all, the neighbors behind, just because there's so much density and greenery.
And the retention pun mark is right behind.
To the left a little bit, yeah.
Where's that again? Right?
I think it's sort of where it says, yeah.
Yep.
They would have to do some potentially underground storage, so they would ultimately discharge into the creek, kind of off the back left corner, as you look at it here, or into that pond. They would have to do underground storage to mitigate their additional impervious surface areas and everything else, and then discharge into that.
Okay.
No, and I think that the theme that you've presented is consistent with the little plaza.
Very much, yeah.
Hang Wai is, you know, the parking's not behind the building, it's to not impact the people on Liberty Street, it's on the sides. I think that's consistent here with what you're proposing, so I think that's probably a good thing, so.
So can I ask you a question? I assume you've probably maybe done some studies. You know that there's an interest in people that, once you put these apartments in, they want to, they gravitate to coming to here?
I think that everyone's excited about new development. We haven't done any formal studies.
Okay.
We've just heard the need, and we've seen other projects, you know, succeed all over the place. I think people generally want modern, new housing stock that doesn't require maintenance and it makes life sort of simpler.
And I do know there's a, cut a few apartments right around that area, and they, there is no vacancies, I mean, they're usually, there's a need, and they, so.
Do you guys, not knowing much about your business, but do you guys have other properties, anything similar in nature to what?
Well, we've got a couple other similar projects under development now, in the city of Rochester.
You do?
But this would be the first from, you know, new development, similar to this in the suburbs.
Nice. Is there anything similar to this, as far as that, we can look at, as far as what a building looks like, similar to this?
Well, we're working on one that's identified, you know, the Carnegie on Goodman.
I have.
But we're doing a mirror to the Carnegie, and the parcel right next door to it, that's under development, you know, it's under development now.
Okay. Interesting.
Like, you know, a high-end product, I think that people, there's desire for.
Right now, we're working on a project on School Street in Victor that's similar to that, it's a three-story.
Is that, I thought I saw, that, your name's on that, right?
Yep.
I saw that when I rode my, I ride on the canal, so I went right by there the other day. It's a nice building.
Yeah, and it's, you know, similar demand, you know, for in-town, in-village. People love to be close in.
Sure. Yeah. Okay.
So for this point, I think if you had any other comments, otherwise, the next step for these folks would be to come and make formal application for conditional use permit and site plan. And if, this would be the time to say, speak now or forever, you know, if you don't want them to make that application now, would be a good time to let them know. We'd like.
No, I think it's vastly improved to what the last time. I was, you know, concerned, because you want the historic look, you don't want to lose the character. The building that, you know, we spoke about, that was, you know.
Yeah, we heard your, we heard your feedback, we heard the staff feedback, and we're happy to make modifications that satisfy you.
Yeah, thank you for doing that.
Yeah, great.
What is, so, just to talk through the approval process, we come back to town board with the application.
Yeah, so full application, site plan, documentation, letter of intent, and I certainly can talk to you all of this offline.
Do you mind taking that conversation? Thank you.
Yeah, happy, happy to talk offline and walk you through that.
Cool. Thank you.
Thank you guys very much for coming, have a great night. We'll look forward to seeing you soon.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right. We have, next on the agenda, Kerry, I believe we have another guest.
Yes, the next guests are mine as well. We've got Jeff DeFranco and his son Nick, Nicholas, I'm not sure I want to shorten or make him sound like he's in trouble, are here. They're prospectively looking at purchasing, or in their contract to purchase, 1861 Penfield Road. They wanted to come in and chat with the town board before they even put pen to paper, a very early conversation to talk about their idea, so that they can get some input and feedback from the board before they come back with some concept or even a full application. So, I did provide the GIS map, so everybody knows where we are and what we're talking about, and I'll just pull that up right now for convenience. So the parcel that is highlighted, sort of in, in blue here, is an empty vacant lot, and it's bounded on either side by two existing buildings, and I'll bring up a street view as well, in case that's helpful. And with that, I would, the, they're looking at proposing two, two structures on the property. One, that would be sort of in keeping or in line with the existing building, building line up on Penfield Road. The plan would be to, to construct a, a, a building that would house a bakery for a family operation that they have. And then the, the, on the rear portion, they're looking to potentially install a, or construct a four-unit residential structure. And so with that, I would pass it over to Jeff.
Thanks, Carrie. Thanks for meeting with us tonight.
Thank you, welcome, thanks for coming.
Nice to see you, yeah, some of you in the past. Yeah, we're, we're just wondering, conceptually, how this would work as far as the layout goes. We're very aware of the, the core area with Penfield, and what's going on with the historic area. So that would be the storefront, and in fact, yes, a, a bakery-type frontage is what we'd like to do with a retail space. But we'd also like to, in the back, as Carrie said, have a multiple, like a quad unit, that we'd like to have for multiple family living. In addition, on the front unit, some questions are, are we able to have apartment units off of that as well? So off of that street, that view right there, so if you have the, the frontage there for the bakery, so the street frontage, you would see the, the bakery. Again, we understand the regulations that are involved. Can we go back behind the building, though, and have additional areas of, of rental that would be possible, potential? And those are some of the concepts that we're trying to present tonight, to understand if it's something that the town's in favor of, and how that would work.
That's something you probably could talk to the, the town departments, because.
Our town engineer, I think, might be able to help us on that.
It's where the lot line goes, you know, how far away it is from, like, Woodline, you know.
I think they're looking at uses, but some of the board may recall this was potentially the former home of Aspen Lighter Vacuum. So we worked with Terry Williams, he had a building there, he was looking at having his vacuum building with an apartment up above, and I think something in the back. So I think they're looking to do something very similar to that. Obviously, they'd need to look at site logistics, you know, as the grade goes on their property. But that's, you know, Terry had looked at that piece, you know, had a building design, you know, in that area, opted to, you know, go to the former, you know, church over on Five Mile Line in that piece, you know, there was some issues with the driveway location, and it came down to the, the state DOT. You can actually see it in this picture, the catch basin in the street, so we made them aware of that, that he kind of got to the end of that project. The state said, hey, we don't want, and Carrie's got her cursor right on top of it, we don't want the driveway driving right over our catch basin. Hey, can you move our catch basin, which meant digging up 441, relocating a lot of state infrastructure. Obviously, that was, you know, a major issue concern, you know, from the owner before. We've made them aware of that, and, you know, something they'll need to take into account as they build their building, flip the driveway to the other side, you know, look at an alternative layout. But, you know, this board had, you know, had seen something similar to that in the past. Obviously, they're, they're looking at an additional piece, you know, in the rear, but I think just looking at, you know, the board's, you know, thoughts on, you know, uses on the parcel. And obviously, we'd need to get into site plans, stormwater utilities, but that's kind of some of the back history.
Yeah, before the, the applicants came in and had an informal conversation with us, and Mark and I, and I think we said, before you proceed to design, we want to make sure the town board's comfortable with the combination of uses, is there any concern about there being, you know, any issues or things that you want them to be thinking about as they're coming up with a potential design or site layout? And so I, I thought it would be a good conversation, and if there's no major objections, and you say, please, feel free to work with town staff, then I would direct them to prepare a concept, and, and our PRC staff can review it and take a look. But we thought, we have introduced the idea here, get any initial thoughts or feedback. This is sort of an, an infill development project.
Can I ask one question on the, the entrance right now to that property, is it right there, that's the only entrance right there?
Well, I'm going to pull up the aerial, that might.
How you actually, how do I access that property if I wanted to right now?
Yes, that is the, the access, so it's kind of, there's a quasi-little parking lot there, but that's the access.
That's.
As they get into making, that's kind of a residential access drive. As you get into putting in the, you know, the, the curb line and making it more of a commercial driveway, you've got to widen that out a little bit, widen out the curb line. And that's when it got into the taper of that curb line, got into that catch basin, so that's just something they're going to have to pay attention to, and wanted to highlight that to them early on.
Well, there was a little house there years ago.
Yep, that came down, and then, so I say, that's a residential driveway, as you make it, for a bakery or any other commercial aspect, you've got to modify that driveway, you can get, you know, vehicles in and out that, you know, may be more of a delivery truck.
Have you considered buying the restaurant next door that's been sitting there vacant for a couple of years?
Is that of interest? I, I think so.
That would be perfect for you, then you wouldn't have to think about going down in the valley.
Actually, we're longtime residents of Penfield, I, I developed Ettrick Forest years ago, and Mexican restaurant was nice until the building fell apart.
Right, yeah.
Understood, yes, there's certainly an interest there. I'd like to work with the town on that as well, conceptually. And just want to kind of, I don't want to load the wagon before I have the horses hooked up, and that's why we're here, so.
That's okay.
Yeah, I mean, if our concept is, is favorable, and we can continue working forward, but that piece would fit perfectly in, and it'd clean up, it would clean that up. We'll just say that politically correct.
Can you help me to, to visualize the concept a little better, please? So on the parcel with the storefront, is that bakery going to be, like, a single unit? Like, just a one-product-type shop, or is it going to be a multiple space?
So from the street?
Yes.
Yeah, from, from the street, it'll appear as one entity, one, one bakery frontage, one, one space?
Okay.
What we're looking at is behind it, so to hide anything that we have behind it.
Yep, so I, so I, so if I just, can we walk through the property together? So it's going to be a single storefront, I imagine there to be at least a small parking lot in the rear of the bakery, is that right?
Yes.
And then, going deeper into your parcel, that would be where the multifamily housing unit would be. So for that multifamily housing unit, can you tell me, are you envisioning single-story, multifamily, double-story, three-story? How are the families going to be situated?
Yeah, it would be probably an over-under quad, is what it would be, two stories, same, same level.
Over-under quad, what is an over-under quad?
So it would be two units above and two units below?
Okay, okay.
So each unit would be a single story?
Yep, and is the parking lot for that multifamily unit, is that going to be a separate lot, or are they going to be also using?
It would be a separate lot.
Okay, and is that separate lot going to be, can you tell me how it would be situated relative to? Yeah, where, where would it be, because I'm seeing, like, the front of the, the parcel is very elongated?
We need to know, I mean, those are some great questions, so number one, we have to work with Mark as far as your retention pond goes.
Yeah.
And, and developing the area, so these are, this is just a concept meeting. Wherever we can put it in, we would, with how we had to position the unit. But it would be back over the actual 48-inch right now, correct, Mark? There's a easement there for the pass-through of the creek, that's actually underneath that parcel that runs from the, that'd be from the east to the west. So it would be back there, the parking lot, to answer your question, would not be at the front, because you'd have to have individuals walk from, like, the front to the back, which is, I don't know anyone that wants to walk.
That is convenient, sure.
Exactly, that far.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be concerned, I don't know about how the, because it's such a steep, it's not a steep slope, but it's, it's such a steep hill going down, and, and, you know, the park. I, I remember when the restaurant was there, and if you parked down there, you know, and sometimes it rained or whatever, it was, it was awful. You know, there, there might be problems that way, but the other one would be the fact it's so close to Woodside, you got those neighbors that are, be overlooking the apartments, and, you know, that, that's a possible concern.
It's actually tucked back pretty good. There's a large wooded knoll that, that's there from the east and to the south. And we're immediately bordered with a daycare.
Okay.
On, on the other side, that is wide open, kind of, you know, an open field area, so.
All right.
So as Carrie turned on, that's our stream layer, so that blue line shows where the creek used to go through. That's, that pipe's been extended over the years, it kind of was piped through P Pods, it was extended through this area. So we do have a storm sewer that runs through the middle of that, so that would preclude where some of the building and, and parking would be located. So as they talked, the main building would be right up on the front of the road, little parking lot behind it. And then the other building would need to be behind that, as well as their parking lot, just due to the size of the pipe. Obviously, we don't want a parking, you'll have a driveway over it, we don't want a building or any infrastructure over the top of our pipe, so that would push the building behind that, that area.
So given that it's in the very infant stages, I, I'm not opposed to the idea, but I, I think I would want the residential unit, again, if it's the over-under quad, I wouldn't want, like, a giant, you know, something that's.
Historic, yeah.
Yeah, like, not, 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 so obviously visible from, from the road, I guess. But if it's offset deeper into the, the property, I guess my only concerns would be kind of like the conversation that we had with the other development. What is the continuity of flow going to be like, of persons and vehicular traffic? And then, how is it going to, what's the impact, if any, towards the neighbors on Woodside, right? So I guess as you.
I agree.
Have to engineer with, with Mark, the layout, and, and the physical limitations to that property, right? I would, I would be open to the proposal.
Right, I'd be open for conversations with the town staff.
And I, I wanted to, a question, I want to get back to the, the curb cut in the Route 441, because I know that's one of the things, that's a, a, a concern that we have, and we have been hearing a lot of, we've been hearing, I've been hearing a lot in the supervisor's office about traffic concerns about some of the other businesses trying to get in and out of 441, specifically P Pods. There's been a lot of, there's a lot of traffic that's in there and out of there during the day. So I've heard of that, so I would be concerned about exactly where a curb cut would be, and how, just realistically, and, and bringing that extra traffic into that. You know, if you're talking four units, you're talking, again, you know, besides the, the retail piece, the folks that would be living in there, that's a, that's quite a few more, you know.
Yeah, we would have the work, New York State DOT would be an involved agency, just because it's on their roadway.
Right.
So any modification to the curb cut would be a highway permit through New York State DOT. And if they were concerned about the intensity of the use or the trip generation, they would identify that and request a traffic impact assessment. But we typically yield to, you know, the permitting agency, whether it's the county or the state. And they would let us know if there was going to be excessive trip generation as a result of any of the proposed developments. So we'll certainly have them communicate with DOT.
Not, I know you can't answer for the state, but is that curb cut that's currently there, is there an option to flip it to the other edge of the property, the opposite edge?
Yeah, and that's what we shared with them early on, it just, we kind of got to the late stages of the last plan, the town board had approved it, and the state said, oh, wait, by the way, we don't like that our storm structure's in front of that, so, you know, obviously having early-on conversations. I was also going to share the last plan had interconnections with the property next door.
With the tailor?
With, no, to the west, so it was Idrakade, I don't know if it's in any business now. There was an interconnection there, obviously, if that could continue, obviously, if we can have, you know, the rear connections between properties, as we've done in, in other locations. You've got multiple access points, so if one exit isn't working, or has issues, you can kind of spread that load out across those. And obviously, the state would want to see that there's interconnections, but also if we can limit curb cuts as well.
Right.
You know, that's a benefit at the same time.
Would there be a way to connect that in, that tailor right next door, because that's a close, that, close proximity that you're looking for?
I mean, we don't currently have an access agreement, that could be a conversation, it depends where the building falls.
So we don't have curb cuts right after each other like that?
We don't have anything, you know, with them that would require the, the tailor to, to connect. Depending on how this lays out, you know, that could be a conversation, I know we did, and I'd have to look back if it was a filed easement or not, or just a conversation. But, you know, the, the planned vacuum location was going to show interconnection to the Idrakade.
Yes.
At that time, parcel, P Pods driveway. So I think the more interconnections we can have between those, obviously helps to kind of spread that, that traffic out.
It would be, that would be very beneficial, I think, to be looking at that, so.
Do you have any other thoughts or questions as part of the conversation?
No, not so much, you, you definitely mentioned the structure, and like we said, we're in the infantile stage of this. We, the other developer that was here spoke of a three-story building with, it looks like an attic. So it would be no, it would be no larger than that.
Okay, that's helpful.
Yeah, just to give you an idea.
Do you envision still, like, a residential kind of look, not a commercial building look, or is that still?
Absolutely, yeah, it would be more like that, more like a townhousey look, if you, if you will.
Maybe still trying to fit the character of an older feel, is that still something?
Well, that's going to be so far back, I don't know if you're going to have me carry that all the way back through, that far from the road. I don't think you're going to see it, however, it's going to be very tasteful, and we're going to, you know, go through and present to you, and understand what your recommendations are. But as far as the exact historic, so the bakery's going to be, you know, right to the standards that you guys have provided, I understand that. But as far as that unit in the back, you know, we weren't thinking that, but.
Like you said.
It'll be very tasteful, it'll be very.
Like you say, we're not sure where it would be on that parcel, as it is probably exactly.
Yeah, it's pretty far back.
But I think the important one is definitely up on the curbside, you know, making sure that that fits that feel of the four corners as best as possible, that would be my.
Yeah, we're extremely sensitive, and we're aware of the pedestrian flow of traffic, and like I said, we're residents. Nick, Nick actually owns, I developed the old Ettrick Forest, Nikki lives on Five Mile Line Road right now, right across from the park. And, you know, we love it here, and we understand the feel, and we don't want to do anything but help and improve, and, and we're coming before you guys to see if we can partner up.
I appreciate, I mean, that is, that is a parcel or two there that, you know, struggles sometimes to.
Right, bakery would be nice.
Yeah, the idea of a bakery.
You're welcome.
Amen.
So I think next steps are, you work with Ms. Ivors there, and, and get some plans going, and present back to us.
Sounds great, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, thank you guys very much, appreciate that, okay. I think that's it for our guests, we go to action items, I think, Ms. Ivors, Carrie, we got 2132 Five Mile Line Administrative Review.
Yeah, so this is an application we received for a new tenant to occupy an existing tenant's space at 2132 Five Mile Line Road. We've seen several of these in the last year and a half of new tenants, which we're always welcoming new businesses into the community. The applicant did already present their panel sign and got approval through the Historic Preservation Board. And so to, this seemed to fit all of the checkboxes for an administrative issuance of a conditional use permit. So if you're amenable to that, I would ask for a, a motion to allow me to issue the permit administratively, and I can work with the new tenant from there.
Forward, any, everybody good?
I moved that we, that we grant administrative appro, administrative review to go to 20, 2132 Five Mile Line Road.
Move a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Move by Cole, second by Ockenden, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Draw.
Aye.
Cole? Aye. Lee?
Aye.
Ockenden?
Aye.
All aye.
Thank you. Motion passes, so we'll see that for the next board meeting, thank you so much. Next on our list is the 2023 Comprehensive Plan Update, Carrie.
Yes, so I, this is really a Mark and me thing, but, but, so obviously, we had the public hearing on July 5th. Public comment was received at the meeting. In addition, we've received written communication, you all have received copies, town staff has received that as well. We are in the process of going through all of the comments. And I think there were some, you know, certainly some shared themes and some ideas about additions or modifications to the plan that we can look at making, and so staff, you know, based on, you know, the input received, will be coming back to make some, suggest, identify edits, and certainly want to get your feedback if there's issues or concerns that you heard, either at the public hearing or in the written communication, that you want to ensure that we, you know, that gets reflected in the next version of the, the updated version of the, of the draft plan, I would want to talk about that tonight. Also wanted just to, just as for some background, I know we heard lots of, lots of input, and I think it's really important to differentiate the comprehensive plan from follow-up action plan, or follow-up planning endeavors that are typically identified as an activity or a follow-on action item in a comp plan. And so typically, the comprehensive plan is a fairly broad document, and identifies a general direction for variety of topics. And often will recommend if something needs further study or more detailed analysis. And so it's, those are certainly the kinds of things that we'll be looking at to make sure that those recommendations for future action or future planning are clearly stated in the plan. But we want to be careful about not embedding into the comprehensive plan things that should be a standalone planning document, if that makes any sense.
No, no, I understand that.
Okay.
And I appreciate, I think the board has been receiving emails and document information from people still wanting to submit their questions and concerns, still open. I said, I think, last time, that, till this meeting, I think at the end of the week, we can safely say that if every, anybody would still like to submit any questions, concerns to the update, by all means, please do that, and then, as Carrie says, we'll be reviewing that, the board and, with the comp plan.
Right, so staff will be taking a look at everything, certainly welcoming any input, comments, questions that the board has, as, you know, you're reviewing and responding, or reviewing and reacting to the input received. And then we'll continue this conversation and take a look at some edits. And one of the things, because of this document size, and the fact that it's, it's been, it's prepared in a, in a application that does not allow you to track changes like you can in Word, what we'll do is we'll prepare sort of a, an overview of where changes were made. We're not going to document every minor grammatical and/or word replacement change, but major changes, new additions, ideas, you know, new actions, things like that, we'll certainly be pointing out, or places where language was clarified, or maybe where we made some changes so that the information's more clearly communicated. And we're going to try to make sure we're not taking out all of the planner-ish language, the jargon.
And again, I think we should thank Mr. Valentine and Carrie for you, all the work on this, I know Doug Stancers do, besides the committee, on this. So it's a lot, it's a, it's a labor of love, I think, to, to continue this, so, so I want to thank you very much for that, so, on board, unless.
Are you guys getting the, the communications from residents?
We are, we're, so, in addition to the supervisors. So in addition to the supervisor's office forwarding them on, Amy Stekloff has also been sharing any communication coming in. She's really maintaining that sort of record.
Okay, great.
And we're, we're also, we've been forwarding to you, to the board as well.
Yep.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah, if you see it, we're seeing it.
Okay, perfect.
Good.
As they come. So thank you. Any other discussion? Okay. Thanks for that update, Carrie. Next, I think we go to 1385 Empire Boulevard Dance Connection. Modifications to the approved plan?
Yeah, so as you know, 1385 Dance Connection has, they are open. I wanted to have them come in and chat with you about some of the site, site construction elements that don't fully match what was approved by the town board. The engineering staff has been out and I, I know the, and Mark can certainly speak to some of the items as well. I think that some of the changes were very minor. For example, planter boxes instead of foundation plantings, that was an administrative or a field change, not, not a significant issue. But the, I think there's probably two elements is that the area of parking has expanded slightly. And then also, the current site has millings. And this is maybe where I'm going to rely on Mark for the technical comparison, instead of asphalt paving. And that wasn't a change that I felt that staff could say yes or no to. We thought that's something that the town board should take a look at. And I would, I'll be happy to bring up some pictures that the applicant has provided and the applicant and the, and is here as well, so they can answer your questions. But I'll bring this.
I have a question to start. I couldn't tell from the site plan that was approved versus the as-built. Can you tell me in terms of, I mean, square footage won't really help me either, but can you just help me to understand, like, what is, how much did it exceed by, by what was approved?
So we met with Steve on site. We kind of walked through, did a punch list. They had some additional millings areas. They pulled those back. So as Carrie's pulling up the site plan, there's kind of two areas that expanded the parking. So I think there's a two-car parking area by the.
End of the pond.
The biofilter area. And then there's another part in the front, you know, that's a little bigger than what the board had initially approved, but I think it's needed, found to be needed, you know, on site. There were some other additional millings that were on the one side of the building. They've since removed those, put those back to green space. So kind of the, you're looking at the building, the parking in front. So that piece where Carrie's highlighting was kind of an additional add on the other side of, of the pole. So there's an existing pole with a guy wire. Those few little spaces were added there. And then if you pull a little further to the left, those two spaces were added there kind of on the other side of the biofilter area. So the expansion, I think, is minor.
Okay.
One of the asphalt or the millings that were on the east side of the building, you know, made some concern about those. They removed those, they put that back to, to green space. And then I know the board was key on the entrance area converting or making that back to one entrance. They've gone back and seeded that and then stabilized that area. They kind of had an entrance on both sides of their entryway, so they revised that. They've done the plantings on, on that pond area. So I think it's down to kind of the, the two elements as Carrie highlighted, the slight expansion of the parking. They can speak to the demand, the need. And then whether the board is comfortable with the millings. And I think Carrie's pulling up some pictures. So that's the entrance way. At the time, it had kind of an entrance on both sides. So to get back to what the state DOT allowed, they pulled that out. They've since seeded it. You can see the straw there.
Yep.
And then I think Carrie may be pulling up, you know, showing that other, so that's the other little added on, you know, milling area or parking area that they've added. And then there was a little piece on the other side.
So it looks like four parking units?
Four additional parking spaces.
Okay. And if, if we were to say, no, go back, what would that turn into?
It would go back to a grass area. Obviously, I think they feel that they need those spaces. That's why they've added them. Just, I'm sure in the turnover of classes and everything else, they can speak, you know, more to that. The other piece is the millings. So that's basically ground-up asphalt.
Right, right, right.
Put down, so it's not a true pavement. It is a hard surface. But you can see here, even with striping, you know, the striping kind of fades.
Yep.
Quickly, winter maintenance. So that was something that we wanted to come back to the board and make sure you're comfortable with that or have concerns that you share that. And it wasn't something that, you know, was a minor field change or minor modification that the board would handle administratively.
I have questions for the applicants next, but just trying to understand it from, from your view, Mark, is there an environmental impact or?
The additional spaces, no. I don't, I don't see it as a major, a lot of extra. We're going to have additional stormwater issues, concerns, impact of steep slopes. So I think, I think those are relatively minor. I don't see a major impact of the parking expansion.
And as to the milling?
Have some concern about winter maintenance, you know, as well as the striping.
Sure.
And then well as handicap accessibility, you know, millings are going to settle a little bit. If you're trying to get, you know, wheelchairs or somebody in and out of the building, you've kind of got that settled lip area. You know, that one's a little bit more, I'll say the judgment call, but, you know, it's not the same as pavement. It does provide a hard surface, but as you plow in wintertime, you're going to end up, you know, kind of digging that up a little bit more or defining a handicap space.
So I guess one thing, and maybe you want to ask that same question, I maybe know the answer, but the reason you guys decided to mill rather than to do the asphalt paving, Jeff?
Well, at the time, it was mainly to try to reduce our costs for the building and keep, because my tenant is also my wife.
Yeah.
So I was trying to keep the rent as low as possible for her. And that also extends to reducing costs for building.
Did you have any plans to pave at some point? Or was this, did you just kind of plan that millings was probably going to be sufficient long-term?
So originally, when Jim was still here, I was talking to him. And so most of our, a lot of the property, the rest of the property is mainly millings too. And I said, let's, I, when we first started, I said, let's leave it, see how it goes, let it settle. If nothing else, if it's a problem in the winter, then yes, I'd, I'd go ahead and pave it because I don't want ongoing problems. But last winter, it was mild, but it, there really was no, it held up much better than I expected.
Be not a true freeze or, you know?
Yeah, there, so it's hard to say because it was.
Do you have the gravel base that, that would be, I guess, specified for paving? Is that, is there gravel under that or is it millings? How's it?
In a lot of areas, there is gravel underneath. In some, especially out further away from the building, it gets to mainly just millings.
I guess, question, Mark? I don't believe any of the buildings. I went down there the other day. I was trying to figure out if there was anybody still has milling on their property for any new applications versus asphalt?
As I said, some of the older properties do, yes.
Right.
Any of the new construction, no. It's typically all asphalt and new, new developments.
Can you talk to me about the, the need for the additional four?
Originally, at their old building, they had only 13 parking spaces. And so we thought there was going to be plenty, while it turns out, it wasn't. I don't know if it was from the moving and they just got additional students or the lobby's bigger now, so maybe more parents are staying. But there is definitely, the parking lot's always full and it definitely is needed.
When you have a class in there, how, about how many people are in, in a time and a night? If you have, how many?
So if we were to have a two and three-year-old class, there's 10 parents that will stay most likely. But if you have a class of 15 teenagers, you're not going to have any cars in the parking lot. So it really depends on the age of the student. We do have adult classes that we hit a max at 10 to 15 for that age for our studio size. So you have an adult class, you have 10 to 15 cars for the adult class. And it could be running at the same time as a teen class where there's no cars staying. So it really depends on what time, what classes are in, what age the kids are.
Yep. Okay.
So in considering future growth, potentially, or if you decide to hold like a dance event or a dance recital, will the 17 slots be enough?
So we would never hold a recital there.
Okay.
It's, it's just not set up for that. An event, I guess it depends on the size of the event. We have an open house coming up in August and we're kind of crossing our fingers that we will have enough space for that, just because it usually is a very big hit and because of the move and it being so.
So if you don't have enough space, where would you park those cars?
So they kind of made up their own parking spots. And then they also decided to go down onto his property and they parked overflow kind of on his property.
On your property?
Yes.
Okay.
But.
On the rest, because they're all one parcel.
Yep.
It's just, she's on that vacant, well, the old vacant lot.
Okay.
Because our old studio only had 13 spots, I am very used to spacing out the classes to kind of keep that under consideration. Obviously, everything's not perfect, but the more parking space, the better.
So let me ask it a different way.
Okay.
Are there areas on the property currently or with the restrictions, Mark? I'm trying to understand, can we now add additional parking spaces and do it the right way of having it be revised with the plan and coming before the board?
I mean, I think the areas they have designated now, if that works for them, I think those spots work. I don't think those are detrimental to what's there now. So I think they kind of took out the areas that, you know, were some extra overflow and Carrie's pulling up kind of their access down on there. You know, I think if they memorialize kind of what they have now and then have the board come back and.
I'm thinking of excess of the 17. If we wanted to add an additional four, are they able to do that on their?
I mean, it's overall, it's overall the same property. So Steve could look at, you know, if there's, you know, parking off of his entrance drive is an overflow space, you know, you could look at, you know, that, the grade starts to go down, but you could, you know, possibly have, you know, parking along that side or, you know, a pull-off here that they could add some more spaces. Up above, you kind of fall off the grade on the backs, there's not a lot of room there.
Okay.
The area on the side of the building, I mean, you'd have cars, you'd be blocked in, so that's really not an optimal space. So most likely would be on their, you know, that entrance drive going down into the remainder of, of the applicant's property, they could put a pull-off area on the side. I think, you know, as I said, people kind of do that now. Our biggest concern, if it's on their property, that's one thing. Our concern is people start parking out on Empire Boulevard, similar to Barbell or any others we've looked at recently. We just don't want people deciding, hey, there's no more spaces here, let's park out on the state highway and then we've got an unsafe situation. If they can find a spot internally, park along that access drive, you know, make a space in there or designate, you know, some, some pull-off areas, you know, along that entrance. And it looks like there's kind of a little gravel area there, you know, whether that's an overflow space. Again, if it's off the state right of way and on their property, you know, I guess I don't have a concern about that.
I think going forward though, the only thing, my personal feeling is, as far as being, you know, a uniform, we're trying to be very concise to everyone. If we asked you to, you know, pave your property, we've asked another, you know, development coming in the same thing. To me, that piece of it is not gravel versus paved. I've got a little bit of an issue with that, only to be fair, only because somebody, the next person comes in and wants the same thing you guys want. And we're, you know, we just had a perfect example, is, you know, I mean, it's existing, but Barbell came in and redid their parking lot. And it's a paved parking lot. I mean, they're right down the road. I mean, we are kind of, you know, asking, that's one of the big, our big issues is with, especially in that corridor, is parking and safety and things like that. So as far as the piece of being, having asphalt, I don't know how the board feels about that. But I, you know, would think, I would hope that we can keep the conformity and have, you know, the project came in with a plan to have it paved. I would like to see it paved, so.
I agree with you. You want the consistency and, you know, it should have come before the, the staff here at the town to talk about it and you wouldn't have done the milling. You know, it would probably stayed, gone as asphalt if you were going to do anything. And I think, I think it's important to do that.
I can appreciate, I understand, it's probably a cost thing and you get into, you know, but conceivably, you know, that's, this is a, you know, projects that, you know, that, I mean, that's my feeling. I don't know how the board feels. I feel like what we do for one, we should be uniformed to do for.
Right, it sets a precedent if you don't. And somebody down the street wants to do the milling and we, or the, you know, we give them a break. It just gets very confused and you want to be consistent and keep it.
And I would be fine with if, if we could find those parking spots. If you need those additional four, if that's, if the board, if the, if you, engineering feels that that's a, you know, looking at those spots, that that's something they can have for parking spots versus green space.
If the board's comfortable with adding those additional spaces, I don't see that as a detriment to the, to the stormwater. I think, you know, those have been working. They took out the one area that, you know, we kind of saw was, you know, a little excessive on that other side of the building. They've already, you know, rectified that in the entrance. So the existing area they have now, we're comfortable with that. It would be four additional than what you originally had approved.
And your building is.
If the board's comfortable with that, then.
Your building's a beautiful building. I think that, you know, paving, it would only add to that, you know? I know you probably don't see it that way, but I think it's a beautiful piece that I think the paving would just add so much, you know, to your, to your property.
I just have a couple of questions that Mr. Tate being here might actually be beneficial since he's our, I'll call him our asphalt expert. I've had limited experience with millings, but I've seen somewhere, and I haven't walked on that property, I haven't gone down to see that yet, so. But I've seen some cases where the millings are bigger in size and they tend to adhere better and they end up being almost like asphalt in a way. And I've seen others that the pieces seem to be a lot smaller and it ends up being almost like gravel, real small gravel, and it's never really solid. Can you tell me what this current property is and, and a little bit about millings compared to asphalt?
Sure.
Sorry, I'm trying to put you on the spot.
Millings themselves are, it is recycled ground asphalt. So it's what was taken off of a road that was to be resurfaced, a mill comes down the road, it kind of grinds and removes the top layer. You know, as you mentioned, that you could have fine millings, you could have, you know, kind of larger rough millings. It's going to somewhat depend if you're, you know, scratching the surface. If we were going to do a Nova chip job for the county and we're taking half to three-quarters of an inch off the road, you're going to get just the fine millings off the surface. If we're doing a full, you know, full-depth reclamation or dropping down four inches, you're going to get big chunks as you take out four inches at a time. Well, I haven't been out to the site to actually look and see, you know, what exactly that the millings consist of. You know, Steve, you may be able to better speak on behalf of that. I mean, the vast majority of, you know, our parking lots at Greenwood Park, Sherwood Fields, those are, those are a mix of stone and asphalt millings parking lots. You know, that's what we've got in certain spots. It's working, but they're also, being that they're parks, they're, I don't want to say seasonal, they are open year-round. However, the, kind of the draw to them is more seasonal, more springs on the fall.
It's a different use case.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
So that, while they do work for parking lots, you know, it's really up to the, I guess, the owner, the, the user of that, how well it's, it's working for you. Is it, can you plow snow off of them? Yes. Is it the most convenient or would I prefer to? No. You know, it, it will take more upkeep just to make sure as, you know, any potholes, whether it's settlement, whether it's, you know, catching one of the bigger chunks with the plow and making sure that that's level and filled back in, you know, that, that would be up to the owner to do that.
Can you pave over what he has there now or does that have to come out or maybe Steve?
You certainly could pave over that. I mean, I would recommend, because I'm sure you, you probably have it pretty close to the, the finished surface of the concrete for that patio area. I, you know, if it were me, I would at least peel it back a little bit to make sure that you can get enough in that it's going to, the new asphalt when you pave is actually going to hold. But you can certainly pave over millings, no different than you would over stone.
So I will just share generally my concerns of how an application comes in and when we review and approve, it's, there are certain assumptions that hold, that it's going to be built according to the application and the site plan. And so to hear that it deviated is a little disappointing to me. And I think kind of the concerns that Mark generated with what safety and freeze and potential of the markings not being as visible, and I don't know if it was intended to redo the markings every month or what the plan was, but I, I'm not hearing an intent to upkeep that kind of element. I'm not opposed to, to the addition of the four spots, hearing that there is no environmental or engineering impact and there's a clear justification for the increased parking. And so my, my vote or my thought would be, I, I am going to ask that you hold to the application as it was reviewed and approved by the board. If not, I think it does trigger the enforcement arm of the town. And I would be interested to hear what, what that, what that recommendation and plan would be if, if we were to hear the applicants would, would be non-cooperative. But if, if you do go with the site plan as approved, I would be open to hearing, having the four additional spots be approved as part of that. And I would be also open to hear any additional parking that you would want considered as part of that, if there is overflow adjacent to the building or even a holdover, for example, like the owner or the instructors for the dance that aren't going to be in and out frequently, if they are alongside of the building or to the rear of the building where you're not going to be adding to the congestion flow while students and parents are trying to get out after class. I'm open to hearing that because it, it sounds like there's growth, so I'm, I'm willing to accommodate the other spaces. I'm not willing to accommodate the milling, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So just to respond to your point, so as far as enforcement, we took letter credit for the project. We're still holding that letter of credit until we're satisfied and the board is satisfied. So basically, we're holding their money until you're happy and if the board says it needs to be paved, we'll hold it until it's paved and it's completed. And then at that point, then we can release the funds back to them. So that's our, our first option. Obviously, if they still continue to refuse, you could go through code enforcement, everything else.
Code enforcement, approval.
There's a, there's a temporary certificate of occupancy because of the site elements that needed to be. So there was the retention pond and there was delay in plant materials being available. So for, you know, a variety of reasons, a temporary C of O is a pretty common occurrence during new construction. So that's the other, other factor here is that they don't have a final C of O until the site elements have been, come into conformance with the approved plan.
Yeah, so before we, before we get there, so it sounds like if I'm at least reading the board right, at least you had three persons that were in, wanting to hold you to the plan, fair to say?
Fair to say. Steve, how, how do you, now that we're asking you this, how do you feel about paving, about paving that property? Would it be applicable?
We will. It's just, when I talked to Jim, he said I didn't have to at the time, but obviously, that's not correct.
Jim Costello is no longer with, you know, with the town, so, and that, you know, that, that's.
Is there, and not asking the board first, but I'll ask you, is there a timeframe to comply with that that works, you know, a little better for you if the window of time to, to comply was?
Oh, I'll just, I mean, I'll get quotes and we'll, I mean, we'll handle it. I was just hoping we didn't have to.
And I know you have an open house coming up, so I hope that that wouldn't, you know, interfere with that. I mean, by all means, if you need some, if you need the time to, to do that.
Well, it'll never get done before that.
Yeah, you're probably talking several months anyway, just to get a contractor lined up and.
So that would be.
I think what you're looking for, Mossland Kerry, is that you need a motion that we move ahead with.
Yeah, so this is one where I don't know if we need to do another, because there is a condition, I don't know if we need to do a resolution or if this is just a, a vote to say we accept the additional four parking spaces, but we're holding to the, the requirement for asphalt. Because the applicant was asking for sort of a waiver from what you had previously approved.
So I, I wonder if it's, from my thinking, I would need a little bit more information so before we proceed.
For what?
So specifically, like, I understand that it's, I'm not even going to expect that it's done before the open house because we don't want to inhibit your course of business, right? But if you say, I'm going to get quotes this week and then they tell me, actually, we can't even come to get your job done in the next six months, so it's not going to be done before winter. So then what is the action required from the board? How, how long are you going to be holding the letter of credit if no action can reasonably be taken in the next six months? I would not want to initiate the enforcement arm of the town if you tell me on good faith that it cannot be done before December or it cannot be done by April. I kind of need to know the timeline before I take the next step. That's where I'm coming from. So I would, I would, can we put a touch base on this? At the next work session, can I ask that the applicants give an, an update to Ms. Ivors in the interim of what is the timeline expected? What are, I'm assured, I was, to me, you have to get finances shored up or the calendar this maintenance, right?
Would we know, would, would you have an idea in the next, at our next, by our next work session, by next month, whether or not you?
The next work session is going to be held on August 16th, if I'm quoting correctly. So that give you enough time to obtain a quote or quotes for the service to be done or the asphalt to be installed?
Yes, so the company I would have paved, they're a tenant of ours too, so he might be able to squeeze me in. I'll, I'll have to talk to him.
Sure.
I'll talk to him tomorrow.
But we could get an update by our next work session about what, how you're going to proceed?
Yes.
Okay. So if I'm hearing correctly, the four parking, additional parking spaces are okay to stay. We're not asking him to take those out, correct?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. And so then the next step would be at next work session, it will be Mark that's going to be presenting the updated information because I will not be here. I'll be on vacation. But we'll, we can certainly provide more information and I'm happy to furnish any updated information I receive from the applicant.
Soon and late, right.
As soon as I receive it. So this way the town board's aware and you guys, you, you all can continue the conversation at the next work session.
So quick question, if they do have, if they do comply with the paving, then there's no, no action needed by the board, right? Because there's no request for a waiver. So it'd be more of an informational item at that point?
It would be, and I think, I think for this, we're going to add the updated as-built plan as part of the record, having this as a documentation. You might want to maybe take a, a vote. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not the town attorney, but I would suggest we might memorialize the approval of the four additional parking spaces by a vote among the board. And then we can add that into the record.
So I would move for an approval to grant a waiver of the additional four parking spaces as non-compliant with the application as it was approved. So in other words, the, the four additional parking spaces are okay.
Okay.
But to grant the waiver.
Grant the approval, grant the approval, really.
It's not a waiver, it's approval.
I think you could grant the approval of the revised submission or the revised plan.
It's not a waiver, really. Perfect. Good.
I'll second that.
Okay. Move by Lee, seconded by Cole. Roll call vote on that, please, Sue.
Draw.
Aye.
Cole.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Ockenden.
Aye.
All aye.
Thank you. Thank you guys very much for coming. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda is our Ruth, Ruth Bremen bid meeting, a room renovation bid result review weather, and that's Mr. Tate. Thank you.
Thank you. Hopefully you've had a chance to take a look at the Excel sheet that just had a little bit of, or I guess the, the summary. So we did have the bid opening for that a few weeks ago on July 7th. While I was unable to attend that, I know my facilities foreman, Jim Kreckman, was able to. We did receive two bids, one from Struck and Sons and one from FW Construction Corporation. We have previously worked with FW Construction Corporation. To the best of my knowledge, we have not formally worked with Struck and Sons to date. However, with some of the flooding issues that we've recently had in the basement, we're actually going to be working with them on the kind of remediation, restoration for that. They did provide an extremely detailed bid above and beyond kind of just what they gave for the lump sums of each of the items broken out. I know even, I can say even with the, kind of our basement project being separate, the insurance adjuster that we've been working with was extremely familiar with Struck and Sons and had no question over what they were quoting for that project. I feel comfortable, they actually even threw in kind of their own general conditions, you know, and a, a cost with that, and their bid was still the, the lowest. They did submit all of the documentation that was required, you know, so they've got their non-conclusive bidding agreement, being that there's ARPA funding that was allocated for this project.
Yes.
There was also some additional kind of paperwork that they had to sign just because of the use of that funding. So I've got all of that. I'm comfortable with, with moving forward and, you know, wanted to see if the board had any questions or wanted to, or if not, wanted to make the recommendation to prepare a resolution to award the contract.
I have a question on the quote by Struck and Sons. Can you explain to me what the asterisk for general conditions is and why that's a variance with F and W?
So FW Construction did not provide, within the actual bid form, I had the, kind of the, the top rows that you see, so the kitchenette cabinets, countertop and plumbing work, the exhaust, kitchenette exhaust fan removal, the flooring and base cove, the window removal, and so on. I had those as kind of lines to fill out for a lump sum. They had indicated some additional general conditions, and I'm just trying to pull that So they, they put some additional things for the, like the painting of the, the walls within the room itself. One of the walls was anticipated, it's a currently a painted masonry block wall, but to have, to actually be furred out and finished with drywall. So rather than including it, I guess they more or less broke it out, rather than including an additional cost under the painting, they put it, they kind of somewhat separated it into their own lines, so the total is still the total, but things for the, the drop ceiling like that's in this room to be able to make adjustments to the actual frame for that. They, they just further separated their own line item.
Okay, so.
Rather than lumping it into, to something else that they didn't think was as applicable.
So it's not a buffer? It is something that will have to be done as part of the scope of work?
Correct.
And it might not have been detailed as part of what we requested, but they're saying in order for them to adequately or professionally do what we're asking, this is items that they've.
Yes.
Okay.
I didn't see any problem. I actually was, attended the bid. I thought it was, so it was interesting. So I thought it was very, any questions? It seems to be.
Okay, then I would, based on the explanation, I would move that we authorize the bid to Struck and Sons.
Yes.
I'll second that.
Move by Lee, seconded by Ockeden. Can we have a roll call vote on that, please, Sue?
Draw.
Aye.
Cole.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Ockenden.
Aye.
All aye.
Thank you, Sue. Next, our favorite DPW vehicle purchases. Mr. Tate, it's you again.
Thank you. So as I've come to this board in the past, over the past few years, purchasing and acquiring vehicles has been a difficulty due to limited build slots, you know, some of which have even built, I guess, requests and vehicle builds have been accepted and then later rejected by manufacturers due to lack of, you know, materials and products. In the 2021 and 2022 budget, respectively, we, we had a vehicle in the highway and the Parks Department allocated for replacement. Unfortunately, we were not able to, you know, make a purchase or acquire those vehicles. However, I have been able to, I guess, work with a dealer that has those vehicles available on their lot. You know, the Parks truck, it is a cabin chassis, so they would have to actually add on the, the dump body, the, the salt or the plow itself and outfit that truck. But would need to be done no matter what. They, they physically have the truck, you know, reserved for us, you know, if we do want that. Same thing with the half-ton, there are a few additional add-ons, the light bar, the toolbox and back rack for that. They were budgeted for in the 2021 and 2022 budgets, however, because we weren't able to buy them, the money reverted back to the Highway Equipment and Reserve Fund and the Unassigned General Fund balance. As, you know, I want to say it was probably a month, month and a half ago that I was here and was able to, you know, discussed with the board for a vehicle for the building department as well as for the assessors department, was able to work with actually the same dealership off of piggyback contracts to acquire those, same dealership in this situation.
Good.
The half-ton they've got off of the Village of Esperance, piggyback contract, and the Parks one-ton plow truck is actually off of a Monroe County bid.
Oh, okay.
So the, the dollar amounts for those, the pickup truck is, comes in at $55,362.50. The plow truck is at $86,095. Both of those include delivery to us. So while the dealership's in Albany, I don't have to make a road trip.
Great. All right.
So I guess my, my ask to the board is, given that these were included in past budgets, is it, we did with the other, the other vehicles, would the town be, town board be amenable to appropriating money back from the Highway Equipment and Reserve Fund as well as the Unassigned General Fund balance as an amendment to the 2023 budget?
Yep. And I, it was discussed with our finance director that we would, wouldn't be fine to do that. So, board, any questions or concerns on that?
I'm fine with it.
I'll be back to, and hopefully we'll be back up soon to.
This is probably not the last time I'm going to be coming to you about these.
We have a few more.
Looking back, there is a.
We're getting back.
We're getting back.
There is still an outstanding list of other vehicles that I'm working with.
We're on the right track.
Yes. Working with the dealership, they have requested to build slots from GM for those vehicles. We're waiting to see if GM actually accepts those. If so, great, then I'll have information and I'll have numbers to bring back. If GM rejects them, then no sense wasting all of our time.
Oh, Bob, who would like to make a motion?
Yeah, and this is sort of the motion you need is to basically take the funds.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we authorize, make a resolution to be prepared for the authorization of the purchase of these vehicles and appropriate funding as an amendment to the 2023 budget.
Heard you.
Bob, okay, seconding?
I'll second that.
Okay, move by Lee, seconded by Ockeden. Sue, can we have a roll call vote on that?
Draw.
Aye.
Cole.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Ockenden.
Aye.
All aye.
Thank you, thank you. Next word to informational items, and I believe we have an update here from Shadow Pines, update from Mr. Valentine.
No, 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 Rocko Pines.
Oh, I'm sorry, Rocko Pines. Did I say Shadow? I'm sorry, Rocko Pines.
It's always on your mind.
No, I was, I know. Rocko Pines update, please. Mr. Valentine.
Actually, I defer to Mr. Tate on this unless he's got questions.
Be either or.
Oh, okay.
So as part of the Rocko Pines subdivision development, there was a pump station that was required to collect all of the, the sanitary sewage generated from not only that neighborhood, but actually sized for the surrounding basin. It then kind of makes its way heading westbound down Plank Road, turns and heads north up Jackson into the Alden Glen neighborhood. All of the infrastructure for that pump station has been installed, working out the slight adjustment to the driveway for that pump station. However, we do still have the letter of credit for that to work with the developer. The developer has sent in a, as you see on the screen and was shared on the drive, has submit a, a letter requesting that the town accept dedication of that pump station. That was always the intent, it's more so a formality. You know, if so, we would prepare a resolution to accept dedication of the pump station. We would, I also have a, once that resolution was passed, I also have a formal letter to send to the current owner, soon to be former, you know, acknowledging that the town would accept dedication, we would take over any maintenance responsibility. It would then therefore become a, a town-owned and maintained public sewer which appeases not only the Health Department, but also the New York State DUC in the event that there's ever any issues that the town can actually step in and help resolve those before it causes any environmental concerns.
Right.
So to confirm, the Sewer Department and DPW have inspected these pump stations?
Correct.
And this is a necessary step in order to facilitate the, the certificate of occupancy process for the homeowners?
Correct.
Okay. Any issues? Then in order to facilitate the process for the new homeowners is part of this subdivision, Then in order to facilitate the process for the new homeowners, is part of this subdivision, I move that we authorize a resolution, resolution to accept formal dedication, and that this be added to a new legislative session later this evening.
Second.
Move by Lee, seconded by Cole. Sue, can we have a roll call vote?
Draw.
Aye.
Cole.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Ackenden.
Aye.
All aye.
Now we're to the end of the action items, I apologize, I was looking at something. And now we're to informational, thank you very much, Mr. Tate. To informational items, 1225 Empire Boulevard, the special use site plan application update, Carrie.
Yeah, so I wanted to give it, just an update, there's no action required at this time. The application, obviously, we had the public hearing for the project. The applicant sent their concept design to the New York State Department of Transportation for their review. They've since received a memo, and they're working with their, their team or their engineer to address the New York State DOT's comments. So I would just recommend that the, the town board keep the application tabled until such time that there's a revised plan for you to review.
And Carrie, we should just emphasize that that's the K2, the K2 property.
Yes, that was, the K2 application to utilize the former Agway site, located at 1225 Empire Boulevard.
Thank you.
And so at this time, we're awaiting updates to that plan that address the DOT's comments.
Okay, all right. No questions, no discussion, thank you very much on that. We have no held items before us tonight. We have no old business, board, any new business? Seeing none, our next work session will be August 16th, right here, so I will adjourn this work session at 8:01, and take about a five-minute recess, and we'll go to a special legislative meeting with one item. Thank you.